It's quiet around our house. She's there for three days.
Really? But you got some stuff done, didn't you?
Just checking to see if she's still alive.
Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. It's 10 o'clock in the morning. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags. If everybody would stand, please.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come here and take care of the community business. May we do it in a righteous way. We ask you to give us knowledge, wisdom, as we go through this court day. We thank you for everything that you have given us. We ask you to protect this great country from evil. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag. I plead allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. This morning, we have Commissioners Hutchins, Strait, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from September 27th, 2022, regular session. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Is there anybody here which wishes to speak today? Come forward and state your name, please, sir.
My name is Daniel Harris. My address is 3115 Harvest Bend Circle in Royce City. I'm represented by Commissioner Strait. Over the last several years, Harvest Bend Estates, which is where I live, we have had major flooding and drainage issues. Over the last several years, I have been in contact with the developer, Brian Tool, and Commissioner Strait.
Brian's not a developer. He's over the development division at the county. Yeah, okay. Just for clarity up to the public.
Yes, sir. But as such, Commissioner Strait came out April 8th of this year, saw the problems. He came out with Mr. Tool, said, yes, there was an issue. The county should be responsible for it. And from then on, we have had correspondence here and there. From within the last two months, we were -- Mr. Tool emailed everybody that has been involved in this and said that it is now up to the county attorney, Daniel Ray. And from there, we have had zero correspondence from Commissioner Strait, from Mr. Ray, and we're trying to figure out what is actually going on with the issues in our development. Again, we have sent emails, phone calls, left voicemails, and we have had no correspondence with anybody from the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel, do you need to respond at this time? Or any responses?
We just need to talk about the executive session.
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online?
No, there's none.
Okay. All right. Then being no old business, Commissioners, I'm going to move the consent calendar after executive session. And we'll go on to action items. Approval of accounts payable?
Make a motion, repay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There's no line item transfer or budget amendments this morning. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, the quarterly report for the Northeast Texas Children's Museum. Charlene.
Good morning.
Morning.
First, I want to express my appreciation to the support of the Commissioners' Court. What you have done in the past helped get us to where we are, and we look forward to all that we're going to be able to do in the future. Thank you very much. Now, as far as what has been going on, we've had a lot and been very busy at the museum. During the summer, we had 10,000 visitors to the museum, and they came from 158 different communities. Attendance at the year for the year right now is at third -- over 31,000. The most we've ever had is 32,000. So certainly, this should be our peak year, and we are looking forward to the years ahead because we think it will just continue to grow. But we have a lot going on between now and the end of the year, so it should come up to about 35,000, I hope. So we just had our birthday celebration. We celebrated 20 years, and it's really good to see the people who helped get the museum started and for them to see what all has happened in that 20 years. So it was a great time, and some people did not realize we'd been around for 20 years. In September, we began our preschool program, Healthy Kids from A to Z. We also start -- and that's sponsored by Caravide. We also started an art class for kids. And we have a lot going on in October. This Saturday night is spooky night at the museum, and it will turn out two-thirds of the lights. The kids will be given flashlights. The dogs are going to light up in the vet clinic. There's going to be a mummy that glows in the dentist chair. So it's mainly special effects, and the kids love getting those flashlights and going around and seeing what all they can find that lights up. So we'll have s'mores outside and cookie -- that's cookies that look like fingers and pudding that looks like Frankenstein. So it should be a really fun night. We also are beginning our STEM program for third grade, and we have about 300 or 400 students signed up for that. We still continue to be working with the Upper Trinity River District. You know, they discovered a mosasaurus in the Suffer River, and the people that are helping us with our fossil dig got real interested in the real mosasaurus they found. So this has slowed us down, but we think they've got that mosasaurus out and ready to go to the pro. So because we're working with the pro museum and getting it very authentic as to what we have in our fossil dig. We're also getting ready to extend our parking lot by 21 spaces just because the people who come don't have a place to park. So this is a really nice problem to have. So a lot is going on. Before we know it, it'll be time for brunch with Santa in the end of the year. But thank you again, and we will continue to provide creative and imaginative place for families in Northeast Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. Thank y'all for all the hard work you do. That's a fabulous facility for our kids. I wish I was a kid for a -- go out there on Halloween and get me some s'mores. I'm a kid at heart.
Charlotte, I want to tell you something. I appreciate, in fact, I was here as a commissioner when y'all started this thing, and y'all have developed so well. Y'all have worked very hard, and I appreciate it. I repeat what the judge says, basically, y'all have done good, and we're proud of y'all.
All right. I entertain a motion for the approval of the report of Northeast Texas Children's Museum.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Charlene. Action item two, quarterly report for the Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Texas. Hillary.
We have a presentation. I don't know. This is my first time to present. How can I put that up?
If not, it's okay. I just --
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got it in? Let's see if I can do this without turning this off. That's the desktop, isn't it?
Yes.
What's on -- what's it showing online, guys? Is it blank or?
No, it's still showing us.
Still showing us?
As of this second.
If it doesn't work, we can go ahead and --
Give us just a second. We sometimes have problems with electronics.
Best friend or worst enemy.
Electronics has a problem with us. Good little deal.
Okay. Why don't y'all move along, but she gets it up. That'll be fine. Way back on normal. Are we still normal, guys? Online?
First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for the support that you give. You know, prevention is far better than intervention from a cost perspective, but also for the lives of our future generation. So at the Boys and Girls Club, we offer young people who need us the most an outcome-driven club experience. And that comes with positive youth development, high-yield activities, their learning, but they may not even know that they're learning. They love it. We are excited about our targeted programs that offer that prevention space and regular attendance. So we take that, our formula of impact, to produce academic success, good character and citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. We have three sites in Hunt County. We have our commerce sports program. We have Reese Davis, and we have Lone Oak. And we are just super thankful for the growth that we've been able to have. In the last year, we have been able to serve roughly under 1,200 kids, 248 kids a day on average. And what we've seen is the critical issues that our youth today are facing largely due to COVID, just their everyday struggles. You've got learning loss. You've got child abuse, neglect, mental health issues, hunger and food insecurity. These are the things that we've seen over the past, you know, year, couple of years. You all have given, provided $7,000 towards funding on our prevention programs. And I just want to say, you know, in 2015, there was a study done by the Institute for Social Research and the School of Public Health at the University of Michigan. They found that for every dollar that was invested in the Boys and Girls Club, there's $15.80 in economic benefits are returned to the individual and society. That's $1.2 billion annually. That's the importance of what our clubs bring and what our clubs offer. Locally, we all benefit from the investment in the Boys and Girls Club. You know, this saves on societal costs. You're not seeing as much incarceration. One of my favorite things that the Boys and Girls Club offers is we're able to track our students in our prevention program from the time that they enter our program to the time they're 18, and we've seen 100% success rate. They're not involved with the justice system. And so what that shows is prevention matters. Prevention is important. And so I want to let Samantha kind of highlight our prevention program.
Yes. Thank you so much for letting us speak today, and I'm very excited to kind of share with you our prevention program that we have, that we offer to all of our kids who come into our clubs. It is called our Smart Moves. And our Smart Moves is our approach that involves not only just the member or student, but club staff, volunteers, peers and leaders, parents and community representatives to really bring in this curriculum and this support for the child who enters the club as they go through each year with us. This age, this curriculum is supported for ages six to 15, so it gets -- it can go through those stages of growth within that student's transition, as well as practicing resilience, refusal skills, developing assertiveness, strengthening decision-making skills, and analyzing media and peer influence. So this curriculum is pulling and focusing on for that child to have support and self-control, emotional awareness, as well as communication and problem solving. So we are bringing a curriculum that is even catered to them, and there are some examples here of some of the basic curriculum that we offer in the different ages, as well as supporting the different criteria, what's going on, some of the things that they're facing, and bringing it into an awareness for them to be able to participate in this curriculum and really have an in-depth impact for them. Our health program, this Smart Moves is -- it's a health promotion approach. It builds attitudes and skills to support healthy decisions. We are here to bridge the gap in providing asset-based health promotion content aligned with social emotional skills necessary for health decision-making. This is reflected in even the basic name of the Smart Moves, which is Skills Mastery and Resilience Training that we're providing for them. Within those curriculum booklets that we provide for the child, these are our six main goals that you're -- that we usually will provide and support, is create a positive view for their personal future, apply decision-making skills to health behaviors, use effective communication skills to talk about health behaviors, demonstrate resistance skills to avoid peer pressure, and analyze media influence, self-image, and health behaviors. And lastly, access and process health information. So we will go through these changes and steps with these students and really trying to have healthy decisions, abstinence, healthy behaviors, really give themselves a voice and a choice and ownership as they make and transition them into good choices instead of negative choices, and through all different aspects that they're seeing, from their peers, from social media, from history of family. We are there to kind of put into focus and where they can start to make the right step in their decisions. So we're very excited for the support that you've given, Boys and Girls Club, and being able to continuously instill this piece for our kids and our members who are in Boys and Girls Club.
And I'll end on this, just a story. We have -- we've seen many stories come from Smart Moves over the years. I started as a volunteer, WIDP Youth Development Professional, Club Director, and have seen over the years Smart Moves really impacting our kids. One of the stories that I have heard at national conferences was the fact that we had students that, you know, had a situation where they were potentially going to be assaulted, and in that, they had practice on refusal skills. They knew who to go to. And so two students intervened on behalf of this young girl, and the young girl didn't get assaulted, and the mother attributed it to Smart Moves, having that program in place. That's the impact. That's prevention that we're looking at. So thank you so much for your time today. We appreciate it. Thank you again.
You bet. Thank y'all.
Just before I close, I'd like to just introduce, Monisha Stevens. She is our club director for the Reese Club. And Brenda Chavez, who is our Lone Oak Club Director.
Nice to have y'all.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Entertain a motion for approval of quarterly report at Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Texas.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, the monthly treasury report for August 2022. Brittany?
Good morning. You will see in your packets, the treasury report for month in August 31, 2022. We have a month-end balance of cash in bank and invested funds, $69,253,918.63. The main difference that we have in August is if you look on your very last page, page five, the invested funds, you will see at the very bottom, there is a new category where for our ARPA funds, that was moved in August, in our newly created Texas Class Fund. So you will see that on the first page of your -- the actual report that's broke down by funds on Fund 41. We have American Rescue Plans, and we had money spent, had cash in bank there, and then you can see the transfer of the $15 million out of our cash in bank to our invested fund of Texas Class. So that is the main change for August of 2022. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioners? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brittany. All right. Action item four, the fiscal year 2023 Resolution for Indigent Defense Grant Program. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item five, the Addendum to Law Enforcement Support Office Program State Plan of Operation. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number six, per Attorney General Guidelines, request for the County Auditor's Office to conduct the audit for the fiscal year 2021, Chapter 59, State Asset forfeiture Report for Hunt County Constable Office Precinct 4. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item seven, the County Attorney's Office requests $2,584 stipend for Paige Ashley, a $2,455 stipend for Janice Evans, a $1,233 stipend for Wiley Hollipeter. Is that how you say it?
Hollipeter.
And for Katie Jones, out of pretrial program for Hunt County Attorney's Office, stipends to be reimbursed by fees collected under Article 102.021 of the Code of Criminal Procedure. Calvin, you want to address us on any of it?
Yes. I put this on the agenda because this is my way of recognizing the efforts of my staff. These are the four staff members that have ran my pretrial diversion program for the last two years. Just briefly, all four of them contribute to the program. We've grown that program from -- Stacy's here, but I know it's gone -- grown significantly since I've taken office. It's over $80,000. We have basically checked with probation department to make sure this program is actually working. According to probation department this morning, we've got over a 90% success rate for the people that are going into this program. So I think the committee needs to know that the pretrial intervention program is working. This is a small way, a token for me, to recognize my four staff members that make that program work. Briefly, Paige Ashley is the one that reviews all these cases to decide whether these individuals deserve special treatment to go into a pretrial intervention program. Katie Jones and Janice Evans do all the paperwork for both courts because they still go through a formal court process before their cases are dismissed if they successfully complete the program. And then Wiley Hollipeter is the attorney that puts the legal eyes on these cases, make sure they fit my criteria because I'm -- just to make sure I'm not putting convicted felons or danger to the community into these programs. These are mainly designed for college students, people that don't need to have their futures run by a marijuana case on their record. And so I thought this was a good opportunity for me to recognize the efforts of my staff members. And lastly, they all understand that the county is under no obligation, nor would they support this if, for whatever reason, the funds start -- stop coming in for this program. So this is independently funded through the fees that are collected from defendants that participate in the program.
If I may, Your Honor, we're already putting out $12,000 in weapons for this time. There's eighty -- over $82,000 in this fund. And actually, I would think it would go up from the $12,000 up to $19,000, I believe, $505. That's what this fund was created for. That's what it's for. And I have no problem. I have no problem in this with, as long as the money's available in that pretrial -- available through the pretrial intervention program. As long as it's available, I will make a motion to pass this.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion second. Any questions?
Can I ask a question, Judge?
Sure.
Just for the side of the table. I don't know if it's just effective today for those of you, or would this be?
It was effective today, from my understanding. Also, understand this, this is the salary. In other words, it'll come through. I believe the auditor has to put this through the check, divide it out to the check, monthly or weekly.
Or payroll.
Yes. Okay.
And this money's coming from the fees these people are paying?
It is, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
And as long as those fees are still there, then, yeah. All right. Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Calvin, for all the work you do.
And please thank all the people helping you with that.
Yeah.
And please help the people helping you with that.
Thank them all. All right. Action number eight, a proposal for professional services for parking lot at 2700 Johnson Street, submitted by MTG Engineering. Commissioners, this is a parking lot, of course, across the street that we talked about last MTG gave us a proposal for a surveying in Topo and for two site plans to work on how we could rearrange that parking lot to make it, get us the highest and best use of it. And once they get that work finished, then they'll come back, and once we decide on how we're going to want to design that parking lot, then they'll give us another proposal for any engineering services that may be needed, such as, it looks like along that west line, we're probably going to have to build a retaining wall because the parking lot just falls off into the adjacent property to be able to get pavement there. We'll have -- we're going to have to do something along that west line, and then we're going to have to add or move, enlarge the two entrances on both the north and south because you can hardly pull in there in a car unless it's a truck. And so that's going to have to be dealt with. And then depending on what -- how the layout goes, we have to change any grading or anything. They'll -- once all those things have been identified, that where we can give them a scope of services, then they'll give us a price for doing any additional work if it's needed. So I entertain a motion for approval of this.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, the request to enact a burn ban for Hunt County. Richard, you want to brief us?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Each of you has a handout, and I'll go through this very quickly for those that don't have that. What we do is we go with the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, and we utilize a lot of information from them, forecast of the fire danger, and then we also have the Keats Byron Drought Index, and we've got some discrepancies in the county. Part of our county is in the -- a large part of it in the 600 to 700. We've got some of the county in the 500 to 600. As of now, the contiguous counties, the eight that are contiguous to Hunt County, we have only two, which is Rockwall and Fannin. And so then I have a list of the number of grass fires that we have had. One of the things that the citizens tell me as they call our office, that they really hate when we put a burn ban on, take one off, put it on, and because it's hard, in other words, to schedule the burning of their household trash and also a lot of the construction that's going on in the county, which there's very lot of it, in other words, burning brush. We've only had six grass fires in the last two weeks. Two of those were caused by hay baleers. What I would like to ask the Commissioners' Court to do is to hold off for a week. We have rain in the forecast. Our temperatures are dropping. And then if anything, if this rain doesn't come forth and the temperatures don't drop, in other words, we can have Judge Stovall issue an emergency for seven days and institute the burn ban, and then the Commissioners' Court would meet the seven days later. But I'd like for y'all to have all this information when you make your decision.
I told you many ago, I said, I got three raindrops on my windshield coming in this morning, and there's a faint rainbow off to the north, so I think we're fixing to get some rain.
And along with that, Judge, the people, in other words, every -- when we have a burn ban and we get rain in one part of the county, and it may be an inch and a half, those people are saying, why do we have a burn ban? But we go to Celest, and it hadn't rained. And of course, so it's very hard. A lot of people think, when it rains, I can burn. But we actually have to come back, and the way it was written last time is that Judge Stovall had the approval. Stovall had the approval from the commissioners' court to remove the burn ban at any time in case we started getting a lot of rain.
Which we did, and I removed, so.
So, are there any questions from any of the commissioners?
I haven't had any complaints from anybody, or asking us to put the burn ban back on. Have y'all?
No.
I haven't, I haven't seen any fires out around my area.
If, if people will do this and watch what they're doing, basically, I think we're all right. I have no problem in, uh, putting it to position that we can wait for a week and if the judge, uh, allowing him to put it in, and if he thinks so, as far as he talks, I would go along with that.
I agree, and I think at least one of these other four fires that were not caused by hay baleers was caused by just construction activity that wouldn't go away in, with the burn ban, so, so I don't think, even if the conditions were worse than they are and we didn't have rain, it looks like it's about to start falling, I, I don't think we've had just a flood of, well, that's a bad term. We've had a lot, I don't think we've had a lot of grass fires from, uh, these conditions, so I, I think your recommendation, Richard, is well advised.
All right, so we'll just, I don't need any authority, I have the authority to issue the burn ban anytime, so we don't need to take any action today. So we'll just monitor it and keep me posted if y'all see anything looking different, and we'll, we can take action quicker if we need to.
I will get with you, Jessica, in the next week, and probably will put it on the agenda for two weeks.
Just in case, yeah.
That way we can take action if we need to.
Right. Unless we get a whole lot of rain between then and, which, cross our fingers, we hope.
All over the county.
Yeah, absolutely.
Everybody leave your car windows down and.
Yeah.
Laundry on the line.
Yeah, wash your vehicles. All right, action item ten, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the right of way of County Road twenty-five, twenty-six, located eight hundred and ninety feet east of FM thirty-five in Precinct Two. Entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve this under usual stipulations.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number eleven, upgrade of approximately one thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine point six eight feet of County Road twenty-five oh six from dirt to rock in Precinct Two was done by Scott Clemens at his expense, no expense to the county.
Judge, I went out there and checked the rock, and he did put it down to our approval, and I checked in about four different locations, so I make a motion we approve it.
Second.
Got a motion second. Um, I guess my only question, we're just doing this to get it on the inventory then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the work's already been done now?
Yes.
Okay.
But he didn't call, he did the equipment in and rock both?
He done, he done it all.
He did it all, okay. Did we approve that earlier, or?
Well, no, sir, I think he done it on and on because of the development next to the development he's doing.
Right.
And I think that cattle mills, they mentioned to him how you need to rock that road.
Okay, and that's right on the edge of their ETJ?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, we got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twelve, upgrade of approximately nine hundred and eleven point six eight feet of County Road twenty-five oh six from rock to oil sand in Precinct Two upgraded at county's expense.
Okay, this is the same road, um, this nine hundred and eleven feet the county is gonna pay for because the number thirteen, uh, Shreen Developments is going to pay to have the road upgraded. So I thought instead of having oil, sand, rock, oil, sand, rock, we would go ahead and furnish the nine hundred and eleven feet, make it all oil, sand.
Makes sense.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number thirteen, upgrade of approximately nine hundred and sixty-eight feet of County Road twenty-five oh six from rock to oil, sand in Precinct Two. Upgrade, money is in escrow. You said just now that he's gonna put it up. Has he put up the money, or?
Money's in escrow.
The money is, okay.
Money is in escrow.
Okay, all right. Entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number four, the upgrade of approximately nine hundred and ninety-three feet of County Road thirty-two, twenty-nine, from rock to oil, sand in Precinct Three, money is in escrow.
Make a motion, we allow this construction, money is in escrow.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number fifteen, upgrade of approximately nine hundred and forty-nine feet, County Road forty-three oh seven, from dirt to rock to oil, sand, and upgrade approximately three hundred and seventy-five, uh, feet of County Road forty-three oh eight, from dirt to rock to oil, sand in Precinct Four, money is in escrow.
Make a motion to approve this, money's in escrow.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number sixteen, preliminary plat of Sundance Edition Precinct Four. Brian, you want to brief us?
All right, this is a, uh, this is a proposed development. What the developer's looking for on this one is he's looking for a, a approval of the preliminary plat so that he can move forward with the engineering and everything else that's required. Uh, he doesn't want to go through and drop a bunch of money on engineering and, and everything if, if the layout doesn't work for the court, so. Pretty, it's a, it's a big subdivision, uh, very little road furniture. This is, this is perfect, uh, what to do with a piece of property that's shaped like this, doesn't have much road furniture. Uh, he's got a bunch of internal facing lots and some new streets to be built, and this is, uh, actually just up north of Campbell, so, uh, it's a, kind of a different location from, from what we've seen a lot of development going on.
Is the County Road already hard-surfaced?
Yeah.
County Road is hard-surfaced.
We have, do we get the water straightened out to know for sure?
Uh, the developer has spoken with Campbell Water and their engineer, and they do have, uh, according to the, the engineer in the water department, they do have capacity for this large of a subdivision.
Okay.
What type of roads are you putting in?
Well, that's, uh, that's up for, uh, up for discussion. Of course, the lots are fairly small. Uh, this is, this is in an area, uh, that's, uh, it's more of a clay-type soil, so we have not had a pre-development meeting with the developer as to what he's going to do regarding that. We've also got to make sure that drainage is, is looked at as well, so this is just pretty much for the layout.
Well, they're basically one acre lots, aren't they, so it'd be concrete then?
Uh, there again, I mean, this is a, a pretty frequently asked question. I don't have anything in subdivision rules with the acre size on it.
So this, this is just to preliminarily prove the, the lay.
Prove the layout of.
Yeah, we'll get that with all the engineering plans.
Yeah.
Trying to give them some direction, what, what we're gonna be looking for.
Thank you.
Thanks. Everybody all right? Frankie, got any comments?
Uh, not considering concrete streets, but one plus acres, I consider asphalt streets, of course, with county specs, or chip seal, and that's, I'll talk to Mr. Harris about that, which he prefers, prefer, I want two different proposals of putting those streets in. But I do have a engineer working on that right now, the green each end.
If you do asphalt or chip seal, you gonna put a lay down curb on the edges to protect the edges?
No, we're gonna have, uh, hard edges.
Okay. Gonna be a lot of driveway coverage.
And I'll have you decide those for the gallons, too.
Okay.
You know, uh, forgive me in reference to this, because ever since these, uh, uh, normally on one acre, you're gonna have to put off half an acre in reference to septic system, and I thought that, uh, concrete, uh, was the regular thing in reference to this. I guess we need to wait for that study to find that out, but, uh, I have concerns over that. For y'all's information, it'd be good to get those studies back to find out in reference to that.
I'm, I'm understanding con- concrete and asphalt's about the same price right now, so I don't know there's a huge money savings.
The price of oil, the asphalt's going high, and they come down to the.
Good luck with that. Good luck with that. All right, uh, entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, action item seventeen, final plat of BAAH, Bourne Ranch, Precinct One.
This is one that, uh, actually came before y'all, oh, month or so ago. This is the, uh, plat up in Precinct One, North Amerit, that splits the county line. Uh, we've gotten everything worked out with Collin County, uh, they're waiting on, on the Hunt County approval, uh, but they've got everything worked out, and I don't foresee any issues with them, so, uh, the last time we'd, you know, it, it got tabled because there were just some questions about right-of-ways and upgrades and everything else.
And most of the roads in Collin County, we just got a little bit in Hunt, and.
We just got.
If we got all the road stuff worked out, if they're moving one of the roads or something on the north end, straightening it out a little bit, is that what they're doing?
But, no, they're, uh, the roads are gonna remain in the same location. Of course, this is one where Collin County has on their thoroughfare plan a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way, so we increased the right-of-way dedication to, uh, a hundred feet for ours, uh, our little two hundred foot section of road that's in, that's in the county. But, uh, it's, it's clear and ready.
They're showing thirty foot of dedication for Collin County.
Do what?
They're showing thirty foot of dedication for Collin County.
On, on the north-south road, the road coming in from the west is the hundred and twenty foot.
Oh, that's, no, okay, gotcha.
Hmm.
Well, they had no trouble with the north-south road, is east-west, okay, I got you.
Yeah, the north-south road is, uh.
Well, it's still labeled thirty feet on ours.
No, on the, uh, on the final, it is, uh, fifty feet.
Okay, well, I've got, the one I have is.
That we'd, that we'd come back through and, and, uh.
Okay.
Once we discovered that issue with the, uh, with their thoroughfare plan.
Okay, as long as you're saying this there, that's fine, but it's not on my copy.
Okay.
All right, commissioners, you got any questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And Brian, I, we can talk to Becky afterwards about all the filing stuff, she says we can work it out, so.
Yeah.
We may have to take some steps to get it done.
Collin County's wanting different notes on their plat than what we have on ours, they're wanting their Collin County notes and.
Do we need to make our motion contingent on their approval, too? Should we have, since this?
I don't, I don't think that's a very specific, uh, law about that, since it's split in half. I mean, if theirs isn't finalized and hasn't impacted, I think GRS, ERS, it's automatically not gonna work.
Okay, so we're okay the way we did the motion, okay. All right, uh, action item number eighteen, the final plat of AEM Development Edition Precinct Two.
Guys, this is down in Precinct Two on two seventy-six, uh, almost at the Rockwall County line, and this one actually, or a similar rendition of this one came before you last year sometime, and they had substandard furniture on two seventy-six. The developer's since gone in and bought an adjoining lot to give him the required furniture that he needs, so, uh, he meets all the county requirements, and then by chance, the, uh, the next-door neighbor was gonna go through the plating process and was able to jump in on this one, so instead of having two plats side by side, we've got one plat, one plat with several lots, so actually worked out well.
All right, any questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number nineteen, the final plat of Reina Estates in Precinct Two.
Uh, this is a pretty, pretty simple plat, uh, it's on Highway thirty-four, south of Quinlan, a couple of large lots, they're dividing it, so they've, they've got, uh, everybody's got furniture, everybody's got, uh, of course, it's on state right-of-way, so.
All right, entertain a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number twenty, do we need to talk about this one after executive session?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, is there anything else for us today at this time? Not, I'll entertain a motion to go in executive session under items one through four.
Second, motion?
Second.
Make a motion, sorry, can't talk today.
All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries, we're going into executive session at ten forty-five.
Commissioners, under new business consent calendar, I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody's in a hurry. All right, we've got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move on to action item number 20 on the new business, the final plat of Hayes Estates in precinct four. I'm going to make the motion that we deny the plat due to appearance of lack of access on county road, lack of access off the county road. Somebody got a number on it?
Forty-three oh nine.
Forty-three oh nine.
And that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion that we approve, well before I make a motion, let's back up and talk a minute. We got notice this past week from Enterprise that 10 sheriff's vehicles that we ordered over a year ago through Ford, Ford notified them that they're not going to build those vehicles. So we have 10 outstanding orders that we had with Enterprise. They tell us now they can get us 10 police vehicles that are Tahos. And so I make a motion that we authorize the purchase of the 10 Tahos through Enterprise to offset the other 10 that we now can't get.
Second. These funds have already been approved.
We got funds in the budget. We got $240, I think, for Enterprise funding of new vehicles, and we don't have anything coming in yet. So if they're not going to be here until August, we'll have more than enough money to make it. And in the next year's budget, assuming they get here, then we'll put it in sheriff's budget to pay for out of there. But there's plenty of funds in the budget to do it.
You got a motion in?
I got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion that we pay for the new radio system through L-3 Harris out of our capital improvement account.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And then I'll make a motion that we approve the OSSF regulations, revisions for new proposed order per TCEQ.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. What did I forget?
That's it.
That's it.
Did I get all of it? Okay, anything else anybody wishes to say? Anything online?
No, no.
Nobody online? Being no other business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 12:21. Thank y'all for all that you do.